Everyone, I'd like to call the work session for the Board of Selectment down at Tufton Borough to order. Today is October 13th. Happy Friday. Could we please stand and honor America with our pledge?
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning. First order of business is we view the library budget, so come on down. Welcome back, folks.
I think we're here.
All the little knobby things are wearing out at the bottoms of your chairs, too.
Nothing really strangely out of the ordinary over last year, other than the fact that there are two items we should probably mention to you. One is the fact that we need to buy the copier. The copier we have at the library is, let's see, if I can get my nine for you.
Eleven.
Yeah, eleven. The copier used, we can count right now, about 2,007. It's been discontinued. The place or parts are no longer available. The copier functions are increasingly unreliable. The copier's heavily used by the public as well as staff. The cost includes a maintenance contract that covers parts, labor, and more importantly, the toner. I don't know if you don't know who bought a printer for the house, but it was like a down payment on a grand piano. And so, it's a pretty due $3,299 line item. We're asking for the town $1,299 because we are friends of the library, Pledge of a Thousand, and we have an anonymous pledge for another thousand. So, that's that one. And the other thing is, in the maintenance line item this year, we are asking for a $500 contingency. And if you have been in the library, saw we had a leak in the ceiling in the older section. Piles came down, water came on the floor. We don't have any money for inside the building, ready to go wrong with it, okay? And certainly now that we've seen things like this, a failed subject system, which the town's gonna have to deal, the town has to deal here. But we would just like to have a little bit of wiggle room if something like that happens. If it gets used under unforeseen circumstances, we'll use it, otherwise it'll obviously come right back.
So, it's five or seven, Gordon?
What, like a contingency?
Oh, that's an increase of 700, but if you look at number 10, it details all of the...
This is the last line on number 10, which is a $500 contingency.
And everything else is detailed up there.
Other than that, that's pretty much it. Christie did print up, Marcia prepared, and Christie printed up a 10-year history.
That's actually even longer than that.
Well, we start in 2009. If you go, if you see it, 2009, at the bottom line, and extract salaries out of the equation, we were $47,000 plus. And this year, if we're looking at 2018, we're looking at $58,000 plus, which is a pretty slow climb in the inflationary spiral.
And the town portion is actually $2,000 less?
Mm-hmm. So, the salaries don't match what we have on our budget page. That's the question.
They don't?
No, I'm showing a 2017 budget of one, oh, okay, I'm sorry, 149.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right. We've only spent 103. It looked like a $50,000 increase, but it isn't.
No, no. I wouldn't dare.
There's a salary line item of following, the following guidelines, except by usual as far as...
And, let's see, Dennis is, was, he reached the top of his grade this year. I'll be at the top of mine next year. Lynn and Mary Ann are each one away next year. So, we're, we have a staff that's...
Sure.
Yes, thank you.
I have no questions.
And you kind of have to be with me, because I'm doing it this...
That's fine.
On this sheet, do you have this?
No.
But now, talk to, because it looks like, it looks like a $20,000 increase in the library budget, but it probably, when I look at your history, it doesn't match what our posting has.
Well, you're counting for the, I don't know, that, that sheet includes the income?
Probably not.
No, it shouldn't.
Is this sheet we're talking about?
Does it show revenues? You have hidden revenue? I don't, I don't know.
The revenue is penciled in, that's not enough.
All right. If it doesn't put the revenue here, then we'll look at the way you have it.
And then it has a line that says, as voted, 204, 502?
Right.
That's the form.
That's, that's, that was, that's this year, right? Yes.
As I understand it, our town report has to show the gross amount of your budget, that's right, and then under revenues, it shows, uh...
Gift budgets, that's right.
And that confuses the budget committee.
It's municipal budget law. It's RSA 32.
Okay.
So...
So, it takes two pages to make it make sense.
Yep.
So, what we're looking at is the 2017 budget is the town's portion.
Right.
Okay. But what we're looking at is the 2018 budget includes the total, which would then be offset by 15, uh, 18,000, some gifts.
Correct.
So, that's why we're sort of looking at apples and oranges here.
Well, that's what we're bringing to you.
Right.
Well, I have a question for you, gentlemen, and that is, the other night in our first budget meeting, I was looking at the expenditures for the year, and I was looking at the outside maintenance account, and short of the library, 99% of our usage of a $2,500 line item, you know, we're showing at 99%, just still ask more for the show. Is that including subject issues, just pumping, things like that? Is that what you're putting those dollars in that line item, that you have to pay?
Uh, I, I think that's what we, where we agreed that that should go.
I was just, yeah, this, I was curious, because I don't think we've had anything done. I mean, we have some snow and it can ask for it.
We can ask Diane to pull a detail, ask her to pull a detail on that, if you would.
Yeah, on maintenance?
That way we could look exactly what was charged there. Regardless of what we budgeted, that's where that cost needs to go.
Well, that's, yeah.
So, yeah, so if, yeah, you're just trying to figure out why we're that close to the...
I have library outside maintenance, budgeted 2,500, and all but $15 has been spent.
Exactly. That's 99%.
Right. So, I, I suspect that that's, that's why we're, we're that close to, and, you know, undoubtedly will be over this year because of this ongoing extension, so...
We'll hold on one more time.
Right.
Hold one more time.
Are you hoping to be two weeks?
No, once a month.
Once a week?
So far.
I mean, you know, it's...
Now, I, do you have a sign up in the bathroom saying, please insert water, or that sort of thing?
We have, over every sink in both bathrooms. We've turned people away who stop just to use the bathroom. We say, no, sorry, go find someplace else.
What it says is, on the press evening yesterday, that the fact that we're coming back for Tufton Borough days, which fall on a holiday, I hope, because it's a very popular conference station.
Uh-huh.
And another part of the circus is to go over.
Yeah.
We're doing our best, and we've been trying not to do messy story hour crafts, so nobody has to wash their hands.
You have something, you can ask the board on the budget, or...
So, knowing that, or assuming, assuming that, putting that into maintenance...
Yeah, she's gonna run that right now.
Should look at that line.
Of the outside maintenance?
Yeah, because you're not gonna get a subject system built much before May, even the passes, so we've got five months' worth of pumping. How much is the amount?
200.
That's a thousand bucks. So, I mean, should we examine that? Are there any other maintenance issues?
That's an outside, that's not...
That's not on this, on this line. That's, that's a government building, yeah.
Government building account.
All right, so we'll look at...
So, yes, yes, we ought to.
Yeah. Two sets of books. I should be used to this, right? I'm good.
I'm good.
That's good.
I'm fine with it. Yeah, thank you.
Sorry to make you wait.
And the other, the other point I want to add, like the question just before we made, is the fact that when it comes to preparing warrant articles, I think we have to, I'd like to say, change the warrant article to change existing one for use of the capital reserve, which is now fourth building. That has to be rewritten to, or addition.
Do we do that, or do you do that?
It's a cooperative effort. Any warrant article that passes through here, we run through the IRA, and you hear there.
Okay, that's fine.
I got $500.
Thank you.
That was, they came to, that was identifying the problem and seeing if it was, yes.
And, and, and...
Yeah, 500 septic, yeah, correct.
And one, and one pumping.
And one pumping, yes.
So, you're gonna go well over, no?
Yeah.
Fortunes of war.
Is there a war already?
No, I'm just, that's, that's a analogy.
Figure of speed.
Yeah, it has a war.
Anything else from the library, or anything else to the library?
Oh, yeah.
Any good South American authors that you're recommending instead?
I had the New Orange Mary yesterday.
All right.
After you, this is a, this is an op-ed from a guy from Vermont, and he has a series, like, he's written like 20 books, writes 20 here, and his protagonist is Joe Gunther, who's head of the Vermont Bureau of Investigation, and writing about the seed, the underside of Battleboro. Very good op-ed.
That's why I build in Vermont.
Yeah.
Senior business.
We all happy?
Yes.
We're good.
Thank you. What is the board's, thank you again, what are the board's wishes as far as, do we need to vote on this?
No, no, we don't have a role in the library budget, right?
So, you don't move on it?
We need to the budget today.
You don't move on it? Okay.
Well, it's, the Budget Committee acts on your budget, we don't...
Well, then why do we talk here? I thought we had to go to your pool, your chair.
Yes, well, I thought we did.
Well, we'll recommend it whether or not...
Yes, yes.
Very good.
Thank you.
Have a good day, gentlemen, thank you.
I can travel safely.
Yes, it's a...
Do you want to make a comment on that, or?
About what?
About moving on the budget. Have you had that motion or not?
I thought we did.
I thought you did, too.
We can do it, as your family?
Yeah, we can.
By the way...
What was the other one we wanted to talk about? Insurance services?
We're not ready for insurance yet.
Having at the prices.
Okay.
We will soon.
Any other business to come before the board?
Weren't there two budgets at the...
Oh, those are the two, yes.
Was there any other budget that we wanted to blow through here today?
Is there another budget we want to go through?
All I knew was library today, but if you wanted to, well, we still have a little time, right, budget, for Budget Committee, if you wanted to go to Budget Committee on the 24th.
Right.
So, you know, we can get it ready if you prove it, and then, I understood Diane was gonna sit with you folks today about the health insurance that you received so far. Do you not want to do that, or?
Yeah, no, that's fine. That's fine.
Okay.
She's got more than she had the last time we spoke.
We, this gentleman needs to be hitting the road before 10 o'clock, so...
Yeah, yeah.
And you got, you got rafters to put up, right?
I've got plenty to do, I don't have to be here, so...
And I got truants to pick up, so...
Truants?
Yes.
Oh, my God. I didn't have that when I was in school. Where are you going, Bill?
Me?
Yeah.
I have a...
Going on a trip?
No. Well, I have a conference call that, beyond, that starts at 10:30.
So, you have time to get there in half an hour?
Yeah.
I thought your budget meeting went very well, Chuck.
Really?
Yep. People were civil and polite, I thought.
Yeah, that won't last. I, I get a little confused sometimes about the motivations, but I guess that's just because I live on a forest. Because having lived here all my whole life primarily, we've been ruled by conservative Republican budgeting for the last 50 years.
Yes.
So, this notion that we want to spend less this year than last year, we presume that we had some sort of, you know, government craziness going on, and actually, it's been pretty consistent over 50 years.
How are you doing?
Good. Chip?
Yeah, sure, you got one?
It should be in your folder. We made an extra one.
Good.
I'm pretty sure, if not, I have one here.
Presuming I could read.
Do you have any of these, Lloyd? It should be one in your packet.
No.
In your folder, no?
Do you have an extra one?
No. It should be one in, yeah, it was on each folder.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, this is one in here.
Maybe I left it.
So, before we get started on this, we did have a question on the library budget. Have we historically passed the library budget that goes on to the Budget Committee, even though we don't have a statutory role in it?
Uh, yeah.
So...
They, it's just kind of like a formality, I suppose, just...
So, I will move approval of, oh, I lost it.
Right, yeah.
Of the library budget in a total amount of $212,000, $212,328.
Is there a second?
A second?
amount to be raised by revenue is $18,450 less than that, but we have to budget the gross amount.
And that's the correct amount that you made a motion on?
That's, that's the total amount that does not, yeah, does not reflect the offset from other revenue sources that the library gets.
Okay. Are we ready to vote?
Yep.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes through zero. Thank you.
Jared?
I apologize for any confusion on that.
Yeah, I think you're right, Bill. It's, the trustees are the ones who approved their budgets.
That's, that's right, and it's between them and the Budget Committee, but if we've always voted that, you know, I, certainly give the Budget Committee the indication that we're supportive of what they're proposing. Absolutely.
This is excellent. That will be, if you get a copy of this, this is what the expenses have been since 2009. If you want, we'll make a copy of this to be included.
All right.
Yep, that's nice.
I just need to check Parsons.
Budgets are Monday.
We're not gonna have police or fire by then?
No.
Well, around the subject of health insurance, I'll just let you know that you don't know yet, is that we're getting what they call a premium holiday from interlocal trust in the amount of $6,327, and getting that sense.
Explain what a holiday is for the new...
Well, you know, after the year is over, they, not, not the 2017, but I believe this is based on 2016.
Premium dollars spent.
Right, you know, if there's any money left over...
Because it's a nonprofit.
Right. Monies will come back to each, to each town.
You've been, we've been a safe town, basically.
Yeah, but this rate still went up.
Yes.
Your guide was.
It's a beaten swish.
I think that...
And then...
My understanding is the rates are a reflection of the overall exposure, whereas the, the premium holiday is, is a reflection of our past usage.
Yes.
So, they're not gonna adjust the rate down for the next go-around, because that's, that's predicting something that's may not happen.
Right.
So, if, if we're good in, in the way we use it, then...
We'll get something back.
Yeah, all right. And what, what is this that's different than what we get?
No, I just had an extra copy.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know if you needed one, too. Oh, okay. Well, Boyd has one, and Chip has one.
Yeah, I have one, yeah.
All right, so...
I have two, because I have one at home. Sorry.
Double duty. Okay.
We're wasting money printing extra copies.
God. Oh, I forgot to bring in that newest Supreme Court, right-to-no case.
Oh, really?
Yeah, it's, it's...
Just to, before we get into the figures here, I just wanted to bring to your attention the Anthem Blue Cross, the last two columns right here, those are the 2017 rates. Those are gonna change, and we're not gonna get that until October 17th.
Okay, so when, when it says 2018, that's actually 2017?
Right, and I just put 2018 just to...
Right.
Show that it's a proposal and not...
So, the right two columns aren't, aren't up to date. It's...
They're showing negative numbers.
Yeah.
Which probably are not reflective of the actual cost.
Right.
Yeah, those negative numbers might not be, you know, might go down, they might go up, probably.
Yep.
I'm sure that the, the rates are gonna go up. Everything's going up. And then, so, the first column, 2017 Harbor Pilgrim, is our current plan. And we have individual, two-person, and family rates. And in the first column, you can see that I...
Excuse me, what does the 3, 2, and 9 mean?
That's exactly what I was just gonna say.
Why?
Those, that's all right, those numbers...
The aggregate number?
Those numbers mean that there are three individuals on the plan that have individual plans. We have two individuals with two-person plans, and then we have nine employees with family plans, a total of 14 employees covered by health insurance. And those are the numbers that I use to come up with a figure that, for the, for the 2018 rates that we received from Interlocal Trust, okay, they've gone up. As you can see in the second column, it says 2018 Harbor Pilgrim.
So, what you're doing is you're applying the plan rate to the number of that particular plan to generate the annual increase down below.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, exactly.
So, that's not exact, in other words, if somebody goes from individual to two-person, that's gonna change, but you have to go on what we know today.
Right, exactly.
And so...
No. So, as you can see, there's a significant increase of $41,996.64 if we were to stay with the current plan. And then, working with Chip, we asked Interlocal Trust if they could come up with other plans that would be less costly, and they gave, they gave the town three different alternatives, A, B, and C. And, and I calculated how much money we would save, or how much we would pay more, and we're still, you know, if we were to select either A, B, or C plan, we would still see an increase in updates compared to what we voted in 2017.
And this packet behind...
And the packets are the detailed summaries, they'll be the summaries for each plan.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. And then, then moving further to the right, we called Health Trust and asked them to give us a couple of, you know, some proposals, and they offered two plans, option one or option two. And then, under those two options, there are additional options. It's, if you look at option one, they offered two plans, and then in option two, they offered two other plans under that.
We don't have the details now, though.
Yes, it's in the back. You should see, it would look like this. This column here is option one, this column here is option two. It's, it's a little difficult to...
Yeah.
It's a lot of information here.
So, in a nutshell, the Health Trust, Anthem Health Trust, has more co-pays, more individual payments, less covering full, for instance, what is it, what is it, inpatient?
He, our co-pays, 250.
Yeah, the emergency room co-pay is 250 or 100, depending on the plan, and specialist visit is $40 versus our current plan, which is...
15.
15. And...
Which death penalty?
Our current emergency room is 150. It's 250 for...
For 100.
Or 100.
Yeah.
And it seems like they made it backwards for us. And the prescription is 102045, whereas we're at 102030.
103050.
103050.
I think you hit the high spots that affect almost every family every year.
If you don't mind, yeah, something, just something that I noticed was between the options one and two with Health Trust, MRI is the same as we have right now, standard deductible, but then if you notice, x-rays and ultrasounds, we currently with, we have central local pay, zero, but see, option one says zero, option two is deductible, that could be, you know, because of, you know, I'm just saying, that's quite a huge difference between $0 and deductible, as such the point I'm making, and then labs as well. Labs are incredibly expensive. I had no idea until the bill, the hospital accidentally billed me instead of billing insurance, so that's a huge difference I see right there, just I had, I just noticed that myself, but...
You're also looking at a pretty significant... You're also looking at a pretty significant change in the out-of-pocket.
Yes.
Five and 10,000. Excuse me, versus two and.
Two and five.
Two and five. So it's a little more than, well, double on family.
Yeah.
And both of the Anthem deductibles are for max out-of-pocket, five, 10.
Yeah.
And 10, 20, 5, 4. Where, where are we again? Diane, I'm sorry.
A lot of zero right now that we have.
Prescription?
Prescriptions, well, now the prescriptions.
We're currently where, 20, 30, 40?
Zero, 10, 30.
Zero, 10, 30, 50.
Zero, 10, 30, 50.
Yeah. Depending upon where on the formulary it falls.
And the Anthems are at 10, 20, 45 or 10, 25, 40. Depending on the prescription option. The Medicaid, the Medicare, some of us have to deal with that over older. Is about $200 less. But once again, the prescription coverage is a little different. It's actually better, the prescription drug plan is better than 10, 20, 45.
Yeah, because it, on their current plan, it's zero, 25, 40.
Yeah.
And I was, my understanding is with the Medicare supplemental plans, the town can make available to retirees a combination of A and C or B and C. C is just, um, prescription. And then A and B includes prescription and medical. So depending on the retiree situation, everyone's different. Somebody might need to have more prescription. And they don't really need the medical because they're happy with their Medicare. And they're.
But you're also looking at, I mean, I, I am just going to editorialize here a little bit. I have a little trouble by the insurance industry is treating the Medicare because their expenses are so low. And yet, you're still looking at a $1,000 deductible for a thousand or 3,000 if you choose the medical. So if we went with the Medicare supplement.
Well, the Medicare supplement plans are for people that are on Medicare.
Right, right.
It's different from the plans on the left side.
I don't think so. I think that's the, that's the, that's the option that we were given, I thought.
My understanding of the Medicare sup.